Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, November 20. The first item on the agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anybody wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance at the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
Nothing.
Okay, great. That would bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I do want to share that I did send a message to the community today, asking or first thanking the work that our educators have done in the many weeks leading up to yesterday's election. Part of our district's mission is helping students develop a, quote, "appreciation of our democratic tradition," and I've been very impressed with the work that's happened, particularly at the secondary level, both at Oak Middle School and at Shrewsbury High School, to have students engage with different issues, learn about the issues that were part of the election, and there were actually mock elections held at both schools. I will say, as an aside, the slide deck that was created for the high school students was of such quality that my daughter, who was voting for the first time, was a senior, and her college-age sister actually used it to do some of their research about what they were going to decide to vote on, on the ballot questions and whatnot. I do want to thank Jen D. Francesca, the Director of Social Sciences at the high school, and Rob Dunner, middle school social sciences coordinator, and particularly the faculty connected with our social studies and social sciences department for the work that they've done. I do know that, obviously, it's been much written about the fractured political environment in our country, and my message did emphasize my belief that here in Shrewsbury, it will continue to be important to focus on shared values, especially where it comes to providing a high-quality education for our students in a way that helps them, as our policy states, to grow an understanding of the difficult and complex problems they face as citizens in today's world. But I'm proud of the work that our educators have done, I think modeled for our students what it is to be thoughtful, engaged citizens who have the right to vote, and so that when they do exercise that right someday, they can do it in a thoughtful manner. I also just want to take this opportunity, certainly having my office here in Town Hall over the last several weeks, seeing the enormous amount of work that the staff in the town clerk's office did and the many, many volunteers who serve at the polls in Shrewsbury. I think they did a wonderful job managing a really complex process, and they have my gratitude. The other thing I'd like to report on this evening is a very good news story. Last Friday, during the day, last Friday morning, I was able to go around the district with Kimberly Olson, who's the president of the Shrewsbury Education Foundation. Last spring, they took nominations for the John P. Collins Awards for Excellence, which recognize folks in different roles in our school district for outstanding work. They had many nominations, which will be shared with the folks who were nominated, and I know the SEF made some excellent choices for people who are going to be recognized with these awards. There are different categories. I'll list them here, and the ones who are recognized. In the unsung hero category, that went to Robin Guilfoyle, who's the driver of bus number 38 for our district. In leadership, it was Donna Rice, curriculum coordinator, instructional coach at Spring Street School. For support staff, Nicole Nye, who is our secretary at Parker Road Preschool, and Kristi Baldino, who's the head custodian at the Beal School. For para educator category, the three who worked as a team last year at Parker Road Preschool, Ashley Karaskio, Andressa DeLeon Gomares, and Mariana Gonzalez, and then also Emily DeLeon, who's an ABA technician at Beal School. The others are also ABA techs. And then finally, there were five awards given to professional educators. Being recognized were Emily Bredeberg, the media specialist at Shrewsbury High School, Nicole Cormier, fourth-grade teacher at Patton School, Paul Quinn, a special education teacher at Shrewsbury High School, Christine Minor, a fourth-grade teacher at Spring Street School, and, recognized as a team, two special educators from Patton School, Allison Feeley and Missy Newell. So congratulations to all of these terrific educators and support staff, and certainly want to thank the Shrewsbury Education Foundation for their ongoing tradition of recognizing excellent work in our schools. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is the Shrewsbury Paraeducator Association Successor Contract Ratification and Vote. Negotiations between the school committee, represented by myself and Ms. Fritz, along with the central office administration, the district's legal counsel, and the Shrewsbury Paraeducation Association, SPA Unit D. A negotiating team concluded on October 21st with a tentative agreement between the parties. A copy of the memorandum of understanding between the parties has been provided to us, and we did receive confirmation today from SPA leadership that it was ratified by their membership, so that's great news. Should also be noted, as part of today's vote here, that Town Manager Kevin Mizikar would be allowed to participate in the vote under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 150E Section 1. Dr. Sawyer had been briefing him on the negotiations throughout, and he's reviewed the memorandum that we're considering tonight. Mr. Mizikar could not make it to tonight's meeting, but he has notified us via email that he supports the approval of this agreement and commands us on the work throughout the negotiation process. So we'll be posting this document to our website, but certainly to just give everybody a high-level summary of what the agreement includes. It'll be effective August 27, 2024, through August 26, 2027. It includes annual cost of living adjustments in year one at 4%, years two and three at 3%, along with step changes. There's a pay scale adjustment for tutors, substitute pay increase, as well as an increase in the child-specific aid stipend, a one-time retention bonus for all paraeducators who were employed on or before September 1, 2023, and remain employed as of the last day of 2024-2025 school year. We've got a one-time milestone acknowledgement award, effective in year two, for employees that complete their 15th and 20th full school year with SPS, and a few other stipends and some language adjustments, but definitely encourage the public to go to our website and take a look at the document if you're looking for more information. So with that, colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Fritz?
I know Norine, Kristi, and Megan Tower are here. They're the president and vice president of the union, and I was just commenting with them. This was one of the best negotiation sessions that I've participated in, and I do mediation work for a living, and I think this was one of those where I felt we were getting great information as a school committee to help us better understand the needs of this union group, and I'm really pleased that they've ratified that. We're going to take our vote now, and I think it positions this group better for the next three years going forward, and I'm really happy that we were able to come to this resolution.
Further comments, Ms. Heffron?
Yeah, I just want to thank both you, Mr. Wensky, and you, Ms. Fritz, for representing us at this and knowing how many meetings we had. It was a fraction of the number of meetings that you all attended and worked on, so to discuss sort of the, over the journey that this has been. But it's an incredibly important contract for the district, an incredibly important group of educators that are help in our buildings every single day, and so I'm happy to have some both finality for us, for the planning purposes, but also feel like we've really landed in quite a good place for us going forward. So thank you to everybody for all the efforts, because it's a lot of time.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to thank Norine and Megan for being here tonight and for your partnership on the negotiation. It was, as Ms. Fritz said, probably the best one I've been a part of. I know in the three cycles I've been here, appreciate the honest and transparent dialogue and just the respect that everybody had for one another at the table, so thank you so much. And with that, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I'm happy to recommend that the school committee vote to ratify. I was pleased to get the news that the SPA membership ratified it earlier today. I certainly concur with all the comments made. This is a group of colleagues who do incredibly important work, and I think that this agreement moves them into the market in an appropriate way, in a way that we're able to sustain in the course of our financial resources and recognize their hard work, recognize the work that many of them have done over a long period of time. We're very fortunate to have a number of paraeducators who've worked for many years with our students and other educators and just make a tremendous difference every day. So appreciate all the work that was done by both the school committee team, as well as the paraeducator negotiating team, and I enthusiastically recommend that you vote to ratify.
Great, thank you. So no further questions or comments. We do need to vote, therefore I need a motion that the school committee vote to ratify the three-year successor contract with the Shrewsbury Paraeducator Association, Unit D, as presented.
So moved second?
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment. As proposed Vocational Technical Program Partnership with Lester High School require a vote. At the October 23, 2024 meeting, the school committee heard a report on a proposal that would provide access to Shrewsbury resident students to the Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education Programs at Lester High School. The proposed memorandum of agreement between the Shrewsbury Public Schools and the Lester Public Schools, which has been reviewed by the district's legal counsel, was enclosed to us in our packet, along with a memorandum from Dr. Sawyer and a financial analysis from Mr. Girardi. So we can invite Mr. Girardi up and...
Dr. Lozot.
Dr. Lozot, sorry, I have a brain fart. And yeah, the floor is yours.
While Mr. Girardi is getting set up, just for those watching, in the memorandum I provided to the committee, I do recommend that the school committee vote to enter into this partnership. I think it's important to note that, under state law, Massachusetts resident students have the right to apply to high schools with Chapter 74 programs, should those high schools have seats available. And if they are accepted into a program, the school district, if you are not a member of a vocational regional technical district, which Shrewsbury is not, the district's obligated to pay the tuition established for that program and also provide transportation at no cost to the student and their family to and from the program. This opportunity is to enter into a partnership where, under Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidance, we can name a preferred program, in this case, which would be Lester, much like ASABET has been for a number of years for our school district. But in recent years with ASABET, due to some state-level policy changes that they followed suit, having so much demand from their member districts that are filling their available seats, that it is very difficult for a Shrewsbury student to gain access, really to the tune of it's been one or two students a year the last couple of years. Last year, none, but then a couple get off the waiting list, and they can march their grade nine year. So it hooves us to look at opportunities, and it was really terrific that Lester did approach us with this opportunity, because they have space and they have built some Chapter 71 programs that are now in operation. They were also in the same situation where they were tuitioning students to ASABET and lost that access as well, so it was sort of a mutual problem that needs to be solved and really potentially a fruitful partnership here. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi, who can talk about some of the financial pieces. Dr. Lozot will talk about ways we'll communicate with our current grade nine families, should you approve it, in terms of getting them information about the possibility of up to 15 current ninth graders transferring to Lester High School for the second semester to begin taking part in that programming there. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi. I'll add in any other information about the programming, and then you'll have, of course, a chance to ask any questions, make any comments.
Thank you. So this presentation here will piggyback what Dr. Sawyer just shared with some kind of nuts and bolts around enrollment and financial projections, both for if we were to move forward in FY '25, how we would be able to sustain that program, and then looking ahead, FY ' '26 through FY '29, what some years out projections would look like, just so that we're aware of the, you know, of potential enrollment that could be going to Lester, as well as the cost that would be incurred with those students attending through their tuitions and their transportation. So a little vocational enrollment history to start with, and Dr. Sawyer was just sharing this here. In red is where we currently are. We have 22 students attending a vocational program this year. 21 of them are at ASABET, one student is at Norfolk Aggie. If you look back to, you know, this goes back to 2011, 2012, through the teens, it was a pretty steady, with a slight decline in the later part of the decade of enrollment, primarily at ASABET vocational, with a high market in 2014, 2015 of 134 students. There's a red line here that shows the change in ASABET admissions policy going into the 2021, 2022 school year, and that's where we've seen the enrollment successively decline each year, with students graduating out and few students getting into ninth grade, which is where we stand currently in this year, with 22 students who have a seat in a vocational So looking in out years, what we were able to do is to make some projections around what the potential seats could look like at Lester and their Chapter 74 program. And the way we approach this, because we don't quite know how many students will be attending, what the interest will be, is we did three different models. We did a model that showed high enrollment, where there was a lot of interest, and those students attending not only attended, but sustained through their graduating years. We did a moderate enrollment model, where there was kind of a medium level of interest in those students attending the vocational programs, primarily, let me just back up a little bit, as we have ASABET Valley, we have Norfolk, and we have Lester. So our high enrollment model shows sustained students at ASABET, and we anticipate or we plan for two new enrollments each year, and all students who attend ASABET would sustain through their 12th grade graduation. Norfolk County, what we planned for is one student per year, one current student, and once that student matriculates through, we just assume that there would be another student coming through, just to understand and prepare for a student attending that program. The high enrollment at Lester assumed a maximum of 15 seats, which is the current proposal right now, that would attend, starting in January of this year in FY '25, and that would sustain or would include 25 new seats each freshman year thereafter, increasing from FY '26 through FY '29. The moderate enrollment is, ASABET and Norfolk remain the same, and Lester would have a slightly lower enrollment, where we would start with eight students this year, seeing that, you know, it may not be 15, a total of 15 students attending, so we chose a number of eight as a moderate enrollment. In progressive years, with 15 students matriculating into grade nine in FY '26, and growing slightly as a program expands in out years. Low enrollment, again, ASABET remains the same, Norfolk remains the same, Lester, we would assume five students going this year into next, with 10 students matriculating into grade nine, and then some slight growth, again, as the program matures in out years. So these numbers here show in FY '26, if we're looking at what we think to be the high enrollment, we're looking at 51 seats for next school year. Moderate enrollment would be 34 seats, and a low enrollment would be 25 seats. And then you can see here for FY '27 in maroon, FY '28 in green, and FY '29 in purple, what the numbers would be at the high, moderate, and low enrollments. Associated with that is the tuition cost that those seats would incur. Some of the thinking that we did around here was, we have our ASABET and Norfolk tuitions, and then we have the proposal from Lester, in which they'd be charging an annual rate of $13,813 per student, which reflects the tuition cost for Tantascua, which is a like program near Lester, in which that would be the cost for. This year, it would be half that, seeing that our students would matriculate in January. For each of the models, what we assume is a 9% increase year over year. That's conservative, meaning that's a higher percentage. If you look at tuition increases across the state year over year, 9% is a pretty conservative estimate, but what it does account for are big jumps in years, and something we'd be looking at Lester is, as their program matures, what the tuition rate would be as decided by the Department of Education, and just being able to account for those increases. So having said that, again, this model shows tuition at high enrollment, tuition at moderate enrollment, and tuition at low enrollment. In FY '26, for example, our current vocational line item in our budget is right around $500,000. So tuition at low enrollment, because we have a number of students matriculating out of ASABET this year, we have 14 seniors who will be moving on, it would actually be a lower cost to our budget for tuition than what we're currently paying if we have a low enrollment at ASABET next year. And again, if there's a moderate enrollment, we'd increase above what our current budget is for vocational enrollment, and a high tuition, we're looking at about $300,000 more than what our current budget would be. So that would take some planning. We use a slide here just because we wanted to show what the potential benefit could be with Lester Public Schools and their Chapter 74 program if we had, you know, high interest. And what it would show is, it would show almost a kind of re-establishment of the seats that we've lost over time with ASABET. So looking back at 2021, prior to their change in admissions policy, we had 113 students attending ASABET, and it's declined since to the 22 in 2024, 2025, as previously shown. If we do see strong interest and the enrollment grows at a high rate, it shows almost a like image of what enrollment could be for students, meaning that we could be offering a similar amount of seats to Shrewsbury students that we've offered in the past to ASABET. An additional cost, we spoke about tuition costs. There's also transportation costs. So just to give you an example of what the cost is for a bus or a van over the next four years, or five years, this graph just shows, or this chart shows, the increase through our current contract for what a full-size yellow bus would cost, or a 12-passenger van would cost. In gray, it does show that our transportation contract ends at the end of FY '28. We would be going out for another bid for a contract, and that FY '29 cost would be determined through that contract. So the math we would need to do is determine what the number and type of vehicles we would need, depending on the actual enrollment for that year. And it could take the shape of a handful of different things. It could be one 12-passenger van, it could be two. It could be one 12-passengers van and a full-size bus. It could be one full-size bus, it could be two full-size buses. That's what we've done over the past few years, as we've declined in enrollment at ASABET, is we've managed the transportation need based on what's the best value for the district and what's the best service for our students, meaning we have students who live all over town, we want to make sure that we're providing transportation that makes sense for them. So that's what we'd be looking at each year, is to see what the right fit is for transportation, given the enrollment and the service. So for FY '25, managing potential vocational costs. So we did a similar exercise in that if we had a low enrollment of six tuitions, moderate enrollment of 10 tuitions, and a high enrollment of 15 tuitions, what would be the cost, what would be the transportation need, the tuition, transportation, and then total cost? So for low enrollment, we're looking about $70,000 for six students to attend, including their transportation. Moderate enrollment would be about just under $98,000 for enrollment and transportation, for tuition and transportation. Both of those show one van. And then for high enrollment, we'd be moving up to two vans. The cost for tuitions and transportation is $160,845. So how would we manage that this year, seeing that this was not budgeted into the FY '25 budget previously? We are out for a career and technical education partnership grant. That would be the best way to go. That would cover potentially all of the costs. The grant that we have out there would cover the full $160,845 if we received the full grant, best-case scenario. We could receive a partial grant, you know, they may choose to, they may choose to work with us or provide a grant for tuitions, but not transportation, or partial tuitions, or whatever it might be, given the amount of dollars that they're looking to allocate across the state and what the interest is from other programs out there. If Shrewsbury does not receive the grant, our planning around the following budget areas would support the cost. So we are currently experiencing some savings with the current ASABET tuitions. The tuition costs are lower this year than they were in FY '24. We plan for a percentage increase for FY '25. For the first time in a while, we saw that the tuitions went down at ASABET. We have some savings there that we weren't expecting. We also have one fewer tuition than what we had budgeted for. So all in all, we're looking at just over $55,000 in savings on our ASABET tuition line item for FY '25. Again, we budgeted for two yellow school buses for FY '25, not knowing how many students would be attending, or having a good idea of how many students would be attending, but not knowing how many students would be looking for transportation. We have to account for transportation for all students before they sign up for the bus. With 14 students being seniors, what we did see is we only have about 14 students who signed up for the school bus this year. That allowed us to decrease our two yellow school buses to two vans, and that's a savings of about $66,000, almost $67,000. And then we are seeing a greater than estimated fee revenue from transportation. This is an area that, you know, we would typically put back into our yellow school buses. We would be able to shift some funding to offset some transportation costs, free up some appropriated budget dollars if needed, to get us up to the $160,845 mark that would be the high enrollment for the school year. Okay, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lozot for some timeline information.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. So as you know, there was a presentation given to the school committee back on October 23rd. School committee and some staff then visited Lester High School CTE program the following morning, on October 24th. Tonight, there'll be a vote on our proposed partnership. I'll back up a bit. Dr. Sawyer and I, a couple of weeks ago, communicated with all families of ninth-grade students to share this information, this potential partnership with ninth-grade students and families, some of whom, those interested, have completed a Google Doc to say that they're interested in learning more, a Google form. As of today, we have 15 students who have expressed interest in learning more, and we have some information nights and opportunities coming up. So on November 13th, at 6:30, there'll be an information night at Shrewsbury High School in the Bent Presentation Room. One week later, there will be an information night for interested students and families at Lester- night for interested students and families at Leicester High School, and a tour of the school and of the spaces there. On eleven twenty-five, Thanksgiving week, Monday night, there will be a Zoom informational meeting for those who are interested in attending at six-thirty. Student applications are due on November twenty-sixth, and if needed, there'll be a lottery, the results of which we'll know, on December sixteenth, if there are more than fifteen students interested, as we currently have fifteen spots available. The first day of school at Leicester High School for accepted grade-nine CTE students is January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And so, just a couple of things to wrap it up. I think it's important to note that, just as when we had, as you saw from one of the charts Mr. Girardi provided, upwards of a hundred and thirty-plus students attending Assabet, this might restore that kind of number. You're going to have the annual class size and enrollment report for the high school later in this meeting, and while drawing down the potentially, you know, twenty-five to thirty students in each class would have some impact on the high school, on the whole, it's not going to have a lot of impact in terms of what we need to offer for courses, how much space there is. Obviously, you know it's already very overcrowded by hundreds of students. So some of the additional pressure that's come online these last few years with fewer students going to Assabet would go back to sort of what the typical amount was, if that many students go and take advantage of this program, should you, should you approve the preferred partnership. I, I want to emphasize that, we don't see this having an effect on other high school programming that already exists, some of which you'll hear in the next report about CTE work and, and innovation pathways, some longstanding programs such as our excellent Family Consumer Science Program, our Foods Program, our Early Childhood and Child Development classes. Those have always run with hundreds of students. I think this year, we have roughly a hundred and twenty students in our Early Childhood programming at the high school, those classes, those electives. I think upwards of four hundred and fifty-plus students in our different foods classes. So I don't want someone to get the impression that somehow, students who want to have those kinds of experiences for electives would have to choose between going to Leicester High School and Shrewsbury High School. The Innovation Pathways programs we'll hear about shortly will, will continue at Shrewsbury High School, and a lot of those attract students who wouldn't have been interested in a full-blown vocational technical program in the first place. But we know many students are interested in that level of programming in their families. We know there's demand for it. There was when Assabet had seats available. We see there's some interest from the current group of ninth graders. Should you approve it this evening? That's our focus, is on this, this cohort of students who would leave Shrewsbury High School for the second semester of their freshman year. We would be pivoting quickly then to provide information about all of these different programs to current eighth-grade families and students, so that they can start to make decisions. And as part of our process into the January timeframe, we'll have a good idea of how many eighth-grade students might be interested in those potential seats for next year at Leicester, which will obviously inform our FY twenty-six budget process in a, in a significant way. But again, because of the opportunity that these students who want a, a, a full Chapter Seventy-four program, a vocational technical program that, that Leicester High School is offering, I recommend that you vote to approve this partnership, and I would be happy to answer any questions and hear any comments the committee has before you take any action.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation and the comments. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Boucher.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Girardi. On the transportation costs, on the full yellow bus that would be projected for FY twenty-six at ninety-six thousand, is that the same cost as a Shrewsbury local bus? It's not, so I didn't know if there would be additional cost to transport out of district to Leicester, or if we're getting the same price that we would on a Shrews, you know, a bus that would stay locally within Shrewsbury?
Sure. That would be the cost of what our typical yellow bus would cost in FY twenty-six.
And then the other question I had for you on, on the grant, do we have any sense on timing of that grant?
We unfortunately do, meaning that it's not as quick as what we would hope for. That would help, you know, with a decision for, for this. I believe we're looking at, like, early January was the initial feedback that we received for this grant information.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't have a question. I just had, I just wanted to first thank you for the presentation. But I wanted to add a comment on to that when we, as a committee, went to visit Leicester, I didn't really know what to expect from it. But I have to say, for a program that is relatively in its infancy, they did such a great job, and there is so much potential there at Leicester, and I think that we, there's a demand here. And as we were going to each of the programs, me, coming from a, a healthcare background, one of the programs that Leicester has to offer is the Health Assisting, and looking at the facility that they put together, and really, the Leicester community has rallied around this program, and they were telling us how they are, you know, and they, they have people that, they may not be able to donate money, but they've got a group of, of, they said senior citizens, I don't remember what the, the group was, but they come and they, they put this all together, and it was really just so incredible, and especially for the healthcare section and the food, the culinary. There are, you know, as they were talking to us, these kids are given opportunities that they can walk out of these programs and have certifications that will only help them down the line and put them ahead of, you know, fellow students. So I was so impressed with it, and I do think there's a lot of opportunity, and I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm in support of this, and there's a lot of work that went on behind the scenes to get this off the ground and running. And I am so appreciative from Leicester and Shrewsbury for putting this together for us.
And I think this, this opportunity, we didn't know about when we were forming our budget for this year, and it's one of those opportunities, I think it would be foolish for us to pass up, because it's providing an opportunity for students that we're not able to do. And there, we're not going to be replicating Assabet as it is, but we're going to provide opportunities for students who are definitely looking for something else, and we can't, we don't have the facility, we don't have the space. And they came to us, and, and when we visited, it was very impressive. I think the commute, like you said, the community involvement, the staff, the students, i- it's going to be a great opportunity for anybody who wants to do something a little different than the traditional high school at Shrewsbury High. And I know we have to have cost considerations, of course, but as we're starting to do some formal forecasting, I think it's actually coming at a perfect time for us to be looking at long-term costs for such a program, which I would think we would have probably put in anyway, because we feel that is something we wanted to have student opportunities. And as the students at Assabet has gone down, yes, that doll, those dollars have come back into our budget, but it's not sitting there. Those are dollars we've had to use throughout our budget in other areas of need with cost of living and everything else. So it's, it's not like there's just a pool of, like, vocational money sitting. So we're, we're going to have to make some decisions, but I think it's, it's doable, and I think it's that opportunity, as a school committee, we are providing opportunities for all students. And this is a need that we're hearing from parents, from students, and I'm fully in support of this.
Yes. I, I think Ms. Fritz and I are probably in the very, very similar bucket. I think
this is a great program. I think we should sign the agreement. I am worried about where in, if enrollment is as high as it, as it projected it could be, that is potentially seven times what we have budgeted for next year for vocational programming. I think vocational programming is wonderful. There should be more of it. We don't have enough of it. But while we look, if you go back to slide five, if you don't mind, Mr. Girardi, I think it's the next one, sorry, there we go. This graph tells me, tells a story that's really important for our community, and one is a story of loss, and we're now at the bottom where we've lost opportunity. But to Mrs. Fritz's point, we have used those dollars on other needed priorities, and frankly, for the community, we have balanced our budget on those dollars, right? I don't want to, like, mince any words, right? We have managed to kind of keep some things together, largely because that, that line item was getting smaller and smaller. We didn't want that to happen, but that was happening. And now we have to come up with a plan to sort of find some more new dollars, particularly if enrollment and interest is high. And I, I understand from the passion from my colleagues, I couldn't join the visit, but there's a lot of enthusiasm in that program. I see Mr. Collins in the audience. I know they're getting great advice, and they want to add new and even more programming, so I, I do want it to be incredibly successful, but I also want the community to appreciate the cost that comes with that, and that we have to figure that out. I'm very glad that we have now engaged in some outside consultant support to help us think about those out years, but a hundred and thirteen students in twenty twenty, and, and a hundred and nine students in twenty twenty-nine at a higher rate, and tuition dollars, and bus costs, they're not, they're not actually equal. And, and so we're going to have to, we're going to have to plan for it, and we should figure that out. And I think, and really engage with the community, who told us very strongly that they wanted this, and that this was important. And while we've done a great job, I can't wait to hear the CTE presentation, to make sure all young people are exposed to career options. Vocational programming is something fundamentally different, and I'm thrilled to have that opportunity. I just want everyone to kind of appreciate, we've got, we are, we are going to have to make some tough choices, or have a conversation with the community about what that cost is, and either what else needs to go, or how we may need some more revenue to ultimately support it. And, and again, I hope it's wildly successful. I just want to be really honest with the community. We can kind of make a swap this year to next year and not feel that, but a potential growth, which clearly the community of Leicester is hoping for, right? They're, they're looking to Shrewsbury to partner, because we are large, because we have a lot of young people who may be interested. So it's important for us to be eyes wide open about what that, what that growth number, number means, and how we'll, how we'll find, moving from, I think, I think your numbers in one of your presentations, maybe two weeks ago, Dr. Sawyer had like a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand in the budget, to potentially a two-point-one million in a, a few years out. So that's a real difference. Again, very, very supportive. I just want, I just want to be eyes wide open about what that's going to cost us.
Yeah. Agreed. The Senate's my, my colleagues on all fronts. We've been working on this as a district for a couple of years now, since, since the, the rules changed around access for our students. We know from our presentation a few years ago at town meeting, majority of those questions were pertaining to how do we mitigate this gap, right? And, you know, we, we did say we, we couldn't replicate the coursework because we didn't have the space, right? And, but we, we continued plugging away, finding, you know, ways to mitigate the gap. You know, we even reached out to Assabet Valley Technical School Committee to see if we could get a seat at the table to have that discussion, sorry. And, you know, we've done a lot of things, and, and I know we're going to see a presentation coming up next about how we've worked on mitigating that gap, but it just can't be replicated like what we have seen evolving in Leicester. Really thankful that they approached us about this partnership. I believe it'll open a lot of doors for those that are interested in the vocational opportunities that were previously available to us. We, we took a tour after our last meeting. It was very impressive, and they continue to build on their program, which is exciting. And as Ms. Rieford said, there are some certifications, serve safe for culinary, and CNA for nursing, that young students in high school could get a leg up in their career. Very valuable. And I definitely support the partnership that's, that's been proposed. Definitely feel that we need to be conscious of costs, and I think the public should be aware as well, to see that, that chart that we're looking at right now in terms of the decrease in vocational enrollment, and then the potential of, for the increase. But I think it's important. We've seen a few emails that have been positive towards this, but also, if you look at some of the articles that have been posted on social media, the comments have been overwhelmingly positive, and, you know, fifty to a hundred comments per article have been very positive about this opportunity. So, so with that, any further comments, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I just that I, again, wholeheartedly recommend that you vote to enter into the preferred partnership.
Okay. So we do need to vote, and therefore I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between Leicester Public Schools and Shrewsbury Public Schools as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and second. And all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. The next item on the agenda, let me find it. Let me pass it. Okay. Here we go. I got it. Next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is regarding the SHS Career Technical Education and Career Exploration Report. Dr. Lozot, Mr. Bizidlo, Mr. Verscosi, and Ms. Karen Aries, who joined the district this year as our first career and technical education coordinator, will present an update on the career technical education, career exploration, and related programming at Shrewsbury High School. The report was enclosed to us in our packet, and pass it to you.
Thank you very much. Well, we're happy to be here tonight to share some of the work in which we've been engaging over the past couple of years, and we're very, very happy to have Karen Aries, our new SHS Career Technical Education Coordinator, part of that team. Karen's doing a wonderful job at the high school, and she'll be talking quite a bit about what the work and what she has engaged with students, as will Dave Verscosi and, and Todd and I. As you well know, one of our priorities in the area of educational excellence is to advance career and technical education, and specifically, that priority involves strengthening all students' post-secondary preparedness by expanding access to career and technical education, evaluating the course offerings we currently have in place at Shrewsbury High School, and exploring pathway opportunities. There are several ways we engage in this work, and we couldn't do much of what we do without the help of and support of students, families, Shrewsbury High School staff, our business and community partners, who time and time again give of their, themselves to us to expose students to life during high school and post-high school. Here in, on this brochure that Karen actually designed, there are pictures that include our Shrewsbury High School Career Fair. We have the town manager visiting a classroom as a guest speaker. We have Carlos Garcia, our, one of our select board members, in a lunch and learn with students. And we have Mr. Steve Duty, who is the owner of CSI, Component Sources International, in Westboro, giving some of our students a tour last spring. But all of this work really happens best when we all get involved and engage with our students and share, and we're going to talk about some of those ways more specifically, as that relates to course offerings, pathway offerings, CTE, and partnerships.
Sure. So, excuse me, initially, this fall, we opened up with a community partnership breakfast. We were invited, community members in industry and businesses around to come and do a networking with us at the high school. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty, fifty to sixty people arrive at the breakfast. We did a quick, like I said, networking piece where we introduced ourselves and had partners. And then we heard from one of our community, community partners, Mary Simone, who works at the AC Hotel. We've been a long partnership with Mary in our move program. She talked about the benefit and how her businesses in downtown Worcester are looking to replicate what she's done at the AC Hotel. Additionally, we had students speak about their own experiences working at the AC Hotel and other opportunities that we've shared. I think the most important piece around that breakfast for us was, we made comments, we don't necessarily need capital, like money, we need that, some of the easiest ways that businesses can help us in this endeavor is to provide potentially opportunity to speak to students, or provide opportunity for them the job shadows. So overall, the community breakfast was a, a community partnership breakfast was absolutely fantastic. It lasted about an hour, and we had really great return in terms of finding some really good leads of people who were willing to help us advance this, these opportunities for our students. Additionally, this is year two of Lunch and Learn at the high school, so parents, if you're listening tonight, every Friday at the high school, we have a, a community speaker come in, someone from the community or area come in and speak about their career and their career path, and how they ended up in their current career. We've had some outstanding community members and local business people come in to talk about their own growth, education, development, how they landed, where they landed. We've had young alumni that have promoted their experience at the University of Massachusetts-Eisenberg, and how they worked their way through one of the big four auditing firms, to people who are running real estate companies, to people who are in healthcare, dental hygienists. So there's a lot of opportunities. So if parents are listening tonight, every Friday, students can sign up for lunch, sit down, have a conversation during the lunch period in the commons with one of these community members, which helps stimulate students' understanding of what's available for them and potential pathways, whether that's a two-year school, a four-year school, or potentially just entering the workforce. So students can find that on Schoology, parents can find it on Schoology as well, and Mrs. Aries is a, a point of contact here at the high school. If, if you need any questions, you can certainly reach out to her, but it's been a wildly successful program. We're continuing to grow, and we're booked out all the way through May. So that's really a tribute to the, the community and their ability to step up and volunteer their time. their time.
We have a continued need in that we are beginning Lunch and Learns at Oak Middle School on Friday, this Friday, um, and we will be doing the same, um, thing where we have visitors come in, parents, community partners, uh, those in the trades, et cetera, to meet with seventh and eighth graders during lunchtime. So we're looking forward to that. Karen's gonna talk about Work-Based Alliance, Work-Based Learning Alliance.
Yep, so in your packet, um, you had, um, some information about the Work-Based Learning Alliance, um, and here's some information here, which, it's a nonprofit, um, whose mission is to provide all high school students across the United States with access to industry-connected learning experiences and develop real-world skills needed to succeed beyond the classroom. So, Shrewsbury is just starting their work with them, I had the opportunity in my previous district to work with them, they have a contract with the Massachusetts Executive Office of Education, who pays, uh, student interns, um, to remote, to work in a virtual environment. So essentially taking away some of those barriers about, um, you know, transportation being one, us being able to find a suitable, you know, business partner for someone to explore potential interests that they have and so forth. So last, um, so some of the experiences that they have are four-to-six, um, week duration of internships, those are a hundred hours paid, um, and then they have some project experiences in cybersecurity, computer-aided drafting, and clean energy. And what those are is, um, for opportunities for students to work with a mentor in a company, and basically be so, assigned a project that they work with the team, um, possibly other Shrewsbury High School students, but more often than not, it's students throughout Massachusetts, also in the virtual environment. These, um, opportunities were generally started with innovation career pathway schools, um, and so that's how our, the opportunity came to us. They, um, are expanding now to other non-innovation career pathway schools, however, um, it's a fabulous opportunity. So I will tell you about some of the work that our students did, and I had the opportunity to jump right in last summer and learn all about when I started in August. Um, so these are just some examples, um, and I, I'm just gonna tell you some notes because it's, um, awful small writing there, but these, um, the, the presentations, all their work culminates in a virtual presentation, and they're just amazing to see, and our students are just so well-spoken, and the work that they do is top-notch. So just to give you some, an idea, the top-left one is, um, a, a company called RX Post, and the students, their problem was to research potential management softwares that will expand RX Post, making it more efficient. Um, so they were given, the team was given three options and parameters, and the groups researched the various options and ultimately made a recommendation to this business. Most often too, the mentors and the companies are blown away and usually take the recommendations that they're given by students, um, it's pretty neat. Um, the top-right, this team is, was actually one of my favorites, and it's kinda like right up, right up my alley, probably yours too, from being a little camper. Um, the students were, um, tasked with designing a schoolie, which is basically a, a makeover school bus, um, to provide, um, housing to, um, people who might be in need, um, with a specific design constraints and budget constraints, um, and they were supposed to design, um, give instructional plans, um, to help a vocational school in Philadelphia actually build that bus this year. That one was my favorite. Um, and then the bottom one was KR, KRCG, Cat Rucker Consulting Group. This group was, um, their task was to establish a brand presence online for small businesses without multiplying their workload. So for example, this, this consulting group helps companies with website redesign, social media posts, and search engine optimization. Um, so this, this specific group, their project was to increase web traffic on one of the clients, the client's name was Perceptive, Perceptive Things, um, which will ultimately lead to more sales. Um, and they actually did that by, and they, um, were looking at Google and, and whatever, and they get guidance and direction from their mentors on actually how to do this. The students do not know how to do this when they all go in, um, but they get a lot of guidance and, um, mentoring. So that's a little bit about Work-Based Learning Alliance. Those are three examples. Um, when I, when the students did, uh, come back to school in September, and of course, I was brand-new, um, I did put out a survey to the students who participated and got some feedback about how they enjoyed it, and if they would recommend it, um, and so, most of them did, and these, this is just some, some examples. I don't think I have to read all that, you have it in your packet as well, but it was just, um, just some feedback from them.
It was very interesting during several of these meetings, or presentations took place in the evening hours, and one student group after the next one asked, so, you know, what was your greatest learning moment or learning from this experience? It was figuring out ways to work with others, people I didn't know, um, understand what my role could be, should be, what I might want it to be, but really working as a team, um, and a positive team member was their greatest takeaway.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things about these, um, virtual internships is that the students, um, one of my roles now in, in rolling these out is to have informational meetings with the students who are going to sign up so that they can get more of an idea of what it will actually entail, but they don't know what it's going to entail, and they do a, um, interest survey. So not all the students are gonna get their top, you know, uh, pick, but one thing that they, I always stress, and that they do reflect in their survey, is that, um, boy, I, I really had to work, taught me how to work in a virtual environment, which is never going away now, and, um, communicate, collaborate, schedule on calendar, um, when to work with others, et cetera, so, lots of, uh, twenty-first century skills. Um, we do have twenty-nine students right now in the fall cohort, um, and that, that takes place all on their own, so it's not scheduled through the day.
And the students this summer, ninth graders, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and even graduating students who graduated, all participated, oh.
Yep.
Uh, made up the one-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd students.
Um, the next thing that happened right off the bat in September was, um, our ability to participate in the manufacturing math shop, now that we have our manufacturing innovation career pathway, which is strictly offered to innovation career pathway schools with manufacturing programs. It was held at, um, Gillette Stadium for the first time this year, the last two years, which was conveniently held at Polar Park, which is way more convenient to get at eight AM. Um, but it was, uh, what student doesn't wanna go to Gillette? I have no idea, you know? So, um, I helped, uh, chaperone that event with Mr. Rick Doherty, who's the computer integration manufacturing teacher at the high school, teaching the Project Lead the Way class. Um, Senator, um, Secretary of Education Pat Tutwiler gave a, and they don't know who that is, but we all did, um, gave a keynote, um, or an introduction, they were, and they had some, several workshops that they had to cycle through. One was just, um, a global, um, product developer, um, gave the students a design challenge for designing a, a new, like, backpack, um, so they were in that, uh, workshop for about twenty-ish minutes. They had another workshop where they were using, um, robotic arms to simulate a manufacturing, um, process. This, uh, that was on the far left, yeah, that picture. And then, um, they also engineered some shelter beds with, um, and they were competing against teams in this, that one was the most lively and exciting, um, workshop. And then they had, uh, like, an innovation, um, hall, if you would call it like a vendor fair, where, you know, schools and all different kinds of companies from, uh, Massachusetts who make things here, um, the kids got to see all kinds of great things, and I was actually really surprised. That group right there is, I think, freshmen, um, being quite outspoken and, uh, lots of inquiry going on, so we had a great day there. Um, this was something, this is like, uh, something new that, um, in my role that I'm setting up, aside, aside from the Lunch and Learns, we are having a variety of different, um, exposures to trades, whether it be a career speaker, or we're taking like a field trip to see, so I have to put that schedule in your packet as well. This was our presentation from, uh, Wayne Griffith, Griffin Electric, um, who came on October twenty-fifth. In the middle there with the mustache, uh, is our SHS alum, Michael Campbell, who is actually an apprentice there now, and so he, um, spoke to the students and about his, uh, what, um, the opportunity that this program has allowed him, um, and how happy he is there, so that was really fun. Um, so that's a picture of that. Okay, that's a little bit about me. Dave's gonna talk about, uh, Project Lead the Way.
Sure. So, it's, um, what you're looking at here is the current course enrollment for each of the Project Lead the Way classes. Um, just a little story behind these numbers is, we brought Project Lead the Way into the district, geez, maybe about a dozen years ago, twelve years ago, and at the time, uh, we were only running a couple of classes. It was, uh, Intro to Engineering Design and Principles of Engineering. Uh, those were both courses in the, uh, and what is now known as that engineering manufacturing pathway. Uh, so what you're seeing now with, uh, the list of courses that are offering are showing you just how far we've come in terms of, uh, adding these opportunities for students. So, um, the biomedical program was introduced around two thousand and sixteen or so, and, uh, we've been gradually adding those classes. So, on this list that you see of classes, two of them are brand-new this year, and those two would be the Computer Integrated Manufacturing Course with, uh, Engineering, and then, um, the Medical Interventions Course with the Biomedical Pathway. So, these courses are, um, are essentially the third course in the sequence that students would take. It's, it's basically finalizing that sequence, um, that students would go through if they were going to be enrolled in, in the pathway. Uh, you're seeing that there are three hundred and fifty-six total students that are taking a Project Lead the Way course. Approximately ten to fifteen percent, I believe the exact number is around forty-four of these students are designated as, yes, I am in a pathway and I plan on taking a sequence of three courses. Uh, so then you might ask, well, what about these other three hundred-something students, right? And it shows a, a very unique opportunity that I think we have with our enrollment process. Um, yes, those forty students are in, in a pathway, but we've always allowed students to take courses as electives, and so that was true with our engineering courses. Uh, up until this year, the biomedical courses would be considered the students' main science course. So if they wanted to take, uh, Principles of Biomedical Science, for instance, it was the only science course that they could take, uh, simply just because of the staffing and enrollment. We generally, um, have students take one course, and that's pretty much the needs that we're able to meet. So, we had a shift because of our pathway direction, in which, uh, we shifted each of these biomedical courses, uh, under the same structure that we would for electives. So in other words, right now, a student could take both, um, like, a physics course or environmental, but then they might also take Principles of Biomed or a Human Body Systems course. Interestingly, there are two students included in this three fifty-six that are, like, they're taking Principles of Biomed as maybe a science, but then they're also taking Human Body Systems because they're interested in it. So they're, they're like, kind of all-in on their both science and, um, opportunity to explore, you know, this field. So, the, um, it's, it's hard to predict in some ways what the changes in enrollment will be from year to year. You'll notice, for instance, Human Body Systems, uh, we're running four sections of this course. Last year, we only ran one, and, uh, that's the unique aspect of high school course enrollment. We run the courses that students register for. So, if you got a group of friends that are like, oh, this course was really nice, you should take it, I like it, then all of a sudden you have a surge maybe in one direction or another. So, um, this year it might be Human Body Systems that, that is the attraction. Uh, next year it could be a different course, and, uh, we always try to meet the needs of, of what students are requesting. Um, and, uh, Human Body Systems is unique because students walk by that classroom, and in that course, uh, there's many, they're like, uh, appropriate for Halloween, we just passed Halloween, but there are these mini mannequins, uh, mini skeletons, and through the year, the students are adding clay to represent the ligaments and the muscles and the other tissues. And so, over the course of the year, you see this structure turn from a skeleton to an actual little mini, mini, mini person minus the skin, you know? Um, so that's sort of something that's easy for students to see, and, and, oh, I really wanna be a part of that, you know? So, I think that kinda covers the story of our enrollment.
Um, so, every year, Project Lead the Way has a multitude of, um, events, and the, this one is, uh, last Monday, the Project Lead the Way Fall Conference, which all the teachers and myself attended. Um, everyone enjoyed it, um, thought it was very useful, especially the teachers who are teaching it for the first time, their class for the first time. It really provides a great network opportunity for, and, um, but, just, uh, curriculum enhancement and with all the other teachers who are teaching it in Massachusetts. It's a well-tended event.
In addition to the high school team, you see Jeremy Malarella here, the Design Lab, our Design Lab teacher, um, extraordinaire from Oak as well. So, um, we didn't wanna close without thanking, um, people who give to our Colonial Fund, um, each week, month, year. As you know, the Colonial Fund is our annual fund that is dedicated to bringing equitable, high-impact, innovative, um, career exploration programming to all of our students. Since two thousand and twelve, the Colonial Fund has raised over, just over five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to enhance the learning of all students, and again, we are very grateful to those who donate.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, questions?
I think two words that stuck out to me were exposure and exploration. I think that's what we want students to really get into and understand and be excited. Maybe there's something they think they're interested in, and they tried, and they don't like it, but then they try something else, and like, this is what I wanna do, this is maybe what I wanna study in college. And I think you're all being a little modest, a lot of work has been done in a short, in a short amount of time. We really haven't been talking about CTE that long, and, you know, we've had the innovation pathways, we've had Project Lead the Way, but it's really blossomed, and there's a lot of opportunities in great areas, and I was sharing with Dr. Sawyer today, my husband was onboarding at Olympus, and he sends me a text, I'm, I'm seeing this piece that I have to watch about Shrewsbury High School students who are at Olympus, and I'm like, didn't I already tell you that box? But it's like, these are things, like, we're, we're in the community, and students are getting great experiences, so I think this is great information. I mean, I know we're in the, hoping to get in the pipeline with the MSBA to add on to the high school, to have more space, to do more of these types of hands-on learning opportunities, and these, um, virtual internships, that's like, that's amazing, like, great experience, like, I don't think I did any of that probably till graduate school, and it wasn't this detailed, so, wonderful, thank you for everything you're doing, and I think it's really, again, another opportunity that Shrewsbury High School students are getting that we're really, we're doing a lot better in this area, and in a very short amount of time, so thank you for all that.
I appreciate it.
I'd also like to thank you for the report, it was very helpful. It's really exciting to see all these new opportunities that have been coming aboard in such a short amount of time, and we're very excited to have added your position, Ms. Aries, um, to add some capacity here, um, in our budget last year. It's just bringing a lot more capacity to this very important work, um, so thank you. And I'd also like to mention thanking our community partners that have been, um, you know, parents that are volunteering their time for these Lunch and Learns, um, you know, various business partners that are coming in to donate their time, um, it's just great to see the community involvement. I did have a question about the Work-Based Learning Alliance internships, just how are students selected for those, um, those internships?
Yeah, really, it's, um, a registration process. Um, so this past summer, they, um, registered, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a registration process, but this past fall, I had an information, they're really not selected, we, it's, it's real, yeah, it's anyone who's interested, and myself and, uh, Mr. Bizilow and Mrs. Flynn, I've been kind of looking at what we wanna do with internships, in-person, during the school, uh, year, during the school day, and, um, we're hopefully gonna pilot some in-person ones in this, in the spring. So, you know, as those start to come, then we will, I, I'm excited, I'm not gonna give all this I'm not going to give all the secrets away, but I'm, I'm excited with what's going on and to, hopefully it'll come to fruition and share with you that in the spring. But, um, yeah, so they have certain cycles. So right now, there's, um, twenty-nine juniors and seniors participating in some virtual ones this fall. And then, um, when they, when I get notified that they're releasing the spring cohort, then we'll publish it and we'll have it information. It's like very.
So it's something like that's on Schoology that the kids can see?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo my appreciation, um, to all of you. I remember a year ago when, before the budget cycle and we're like, it seems like we need some capacity. There's a lot of balls in the air. And, um, between the grant writing that you were doing, the, you know, the design of programs, the going out and talking to employers, like there's just a ton of work here. So really nice to have you join the, the team and bring all the enthusiasm to it. And, you know, learning more, like you, I'm like, this work-based learning, like what is that? Like, okay, there's, there's a lot out there, but it takes a lot of work and effort to kind of make happen. And then to engage our students in it and get them their willingness. And I'm just thinking about the conversation I had with my freshman during course sign up. And I'm like, engineering, you seem like you're interested in engineering. You want to try the pathway? And he's like, I can't commit forever. And I was like, forever? But that's, that, that felt like a really long time. And so having this flexibility, and I even think as we were talking about vocational programs, right? Kids enter those and then they do a rotation around because they don't really know and that's okay. And so how do we have the flexibility to have kids tested and try it? And as, as, as you're saying, like have some exposure and go, yeah, that is or isn't, isn't what I'm interested in. So, so glad at the, all the different levels, you're trying to do that from lunches to internships to, to courses. So it's, it's, it's just very exciting. And I don't, you know, I, I, I don't want to ever ping any of our other very important strategic goals, but this one, we have like picked up and like moved so far in such a relatively short amount of time. And so, um, I, I hope that the community appreciated. I appreciate you appreciating the community for their financial support of tho- of those things. But we have to, you know, how to keep this going, takes a lot of effort and time. So thank you all.
Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. I'm such a, uh, fan of early career exploration. Uh, anywhere we can do that within our schools is just awesome. And we've really come a long way. Welcome Karen.
Thank you so much.
We're so excited to have you here. Bertie's, um, I was at that community partnership breakfast on October tenth. I thought I was exceptional, really well-attended. I appreciated the testimonials from the students that were very honest about, you know, hey, I found, you know, a career that I might be passionate in, or maybe, you know, this just wasn't for me. But at least they had the opportunity to get some exposure, to kind of figure that out and answer the question, what do I want to be when I grow up? I mean, this kind of helps that, right? Uh, the business testimonials I thought were great, including the general manager of AC Hotels. And not only, um, how the students respond to working at the business, but how the employees, uh, respond to the students coming in and the energy that they provide, uh, the morale boost that they provide the, uh, the employees of that business. Uh, I couldn't help but, uh, uh, think about my own line of work. I'm in e-commerce when you were talking about those virtual internships and talking about SEO, search engine optimization. I was in two meetings today. I probably average two to three meetings a week on SEO. Uh, so I just think that, that level of exposure is awesome as well. I have a passion for that business. I should probably talk to you, Dr. Lizada. I know. We talked about both e-commerce and school committee careers. Uh, but no, thank you for all the work that you're putting into this. Really exciting and, uh, just exciting for the public to see all that's happening behind the scenes. So thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I also want to, uh, welcome Karen on board and by all accounts, she's doing a terrific job. And, uh, but I think you've identified, I mean, certainly Dr. Lizada, Mr. Bizilow, Mr. Riscosi, Ms. Flynn is not with us this evening, um, rolled up their sleeves and did an awful lot of work to get us to where we are now. Um, and now that we have additional capacity to make these things happen for kids, uh, and, and already still doing work towards this project, but to have Ms. Arias here as well is really, uh, and, uh, it was a wise investment, I think, that the district made, uh, to bring that position on board. Um, and for all the reasons cited, I think there's terrific things happening for kids, uh, as a result and, uh, that are really meaningful. So, uh, thank you for the report and all the work. And we're looking forward to seeing how it evolves in the, in the coming months and years. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is regarding the Shrewsbury High School enrollment and class size. It's a report. Uh, each year, the district is required to provide a report on enrollment as of October first to the Department of Educate, Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh, Mr. Bizilow and Ms. Wen are here today to present an overview of SHS enrollment. So I'll hand it over to you.
Well, great, thanks for having us tonight. And, uh, it's always great to look at the enrollments and see where we stand in terms of, uh, our courses, our space and what's popular and how we, that puzzle comes together in the spring. So it's great to report out to the community how we're using the resources. And Mrs. Wen's been an excellent partner in her role of helping build the master schedule, working with Mrs. Flynn, the school counseling department to make this work. But, uh, tonight, we'll, we'll talk about three areas of focus. Basically, the enrollment trends, uh, class size and building capacity. And I think, uh, I didn't say it this last presentation, but I think that Mr. Riscosi, the Science Department, excuse me, uh, and Mrs. Wen, Mrs. Flynn, have worked really hard at trying to fit programming into the space we have. It's really, really difficult. I think you've visited there. It's, it's retrofitting spaces, it's trying to put programming in different spaces. The robotics team is competing a little bit with our engineering space, which is presented some challenges. They've been super flexible. We've had a, a good working relationship with our team, so, but there are challenges when it comes down to, uh, building capacity. So just a quick, sorry, just a quick, uh, graph here on the enrollment trends. Uh, this is our fourth highest enrollment in the last ten years. Uh, the, the enrollment state has stayed relatively flat. We have three less students compared to last year and five less students this year than the past five years. Overall, in the last ten years, we are, were net two hundred and two students. So if you look at the bar graph across, it's, it's relatively flat. Uh, the, the highest enrollment was in the class of two thousand twenty with almost nineteen hundred students, had a larger senior class at the time before five hundred. Uh, and what we're seeing from the enrollment is gains as we're, some of it as a result of not having access to vocational technical education.
Um, so next we have the average class size. When we look at the, um, average class size by departments, um, the range of the average class sizes is between seven point eight to twenty-eight, um, in which I'll explain in a minute. But, um, we have about four out of twelve departments had an, um, increase in the average class size compared, compared to last year. Last year, we had nine out of twelve. Um, but the increase is, um, pretty minimal with one exception. Um, we did add a teacher in the English Language Learners Department, um, which reduced the class size. It also added a couple of co-taught classrooms as well. When we look at, um, average class size, um, in the academic classrooms, the good news is that over half, um, of the academic classes, um, that we have are twenty-two or fewer students. Uh, we do have fourteen academic classes out of four hundred and forty-eight that have twenty-seven or more students. So just in general, looking at the enrollment, um, of class sizes for twenty-seven or more students, you can see in the past four years, um, it's relatively the same between two to four, two to three, four percent. Um, so it's kind of leveled off, um, pretty much.
In terms of co-taught, we've increased our co-taught sections. Uh, at the high school this year, we have twenty-two sections. If you look at the bar graph at the, uh, on the left, the bottom bar graph does the number of sections. You can see since the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we've increased the number of sections, addressed a variety of student needs in, in the hopes of accelerating their learning, bringing them up to speed and advancing their learning. Particularly in, uh, when we look at our English Language Learners, the ELE courses, we're trying to accelerate, we have language acquisition issues, uh, academic acquisition. Language acquisition takes about three to five years. Uh, social language takes one to three years. So there's certainly challenges from people who are entering the country that don't have a full grasp of, of English. And having a co-taught class here with specialized instruction certainly helps. We talked about, uh, in the last report, uh, about career pathways. These are a number of students that are in by grade and pathways. Uh, and again, certainly have flexibility of looking at the enrollments in terms of elective programming and being of the shift. But, uh, students who are in pathways are given priority access to courses that are in that particular pathway. We hope to grow this, uh, in the coming year. Last year was the first year of a kind of, the first real rollout year of, uh, of the pathways. And now we have Innovation Career Pathways. So this will continue to grow, hopefully with the next course enrollment cycle. And this is, again, we talked about this last, uh, in the last report, but just again, a chart with the number of students enrolled, number of sections and, and a bar graph of where we were from twenty-one, twenty-two on the left in that, uh, line graph to where we are for twenty-four, twenty-five. We have nearly over three hundred and fifty students enrolled in Project Lead the Way courses. Those courses are actually considered advanced courses by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, online with, uh, some other courses, including AP courses. So for parents in the audience, I'll give a little pitch, uh, on the Common App. If you're looking to go to college, Project Lead the Way is actually a se- there's a, a portion of the Common Application where you can, uh, list that you participate in Project Lead the Way courses. So there is an attraction if you're not looking particularly for an advanced placement course. This carries the same weight in the college application as that. And there's a, a specific box within the Common App to report that for students and families.
One of the programs that we do have at Shrewsbury High School is Virtual High School. Um, Virtual High School is a program where students, um, can take classes online. Um, they can only take classes that are not offered at Shrewsbury High School. Um, so Shrewsbury High School is a, we have twenty-five seats per semester. Um, the VHS AP courses are full-year courses, so they take up to two seats per semester. The majority of the students, um, take classes if it's an AP. Um, usually it's AP Economics, um, something that's not offered at the high school, the semester courses. Um, students have found interest in taking courses such as Criminology, Psychology of Crime, Journalism. These are some of the electives that we don't have at the high school, um, that students have found interest in. Um, one of the interesting things is that, um, there is a grant through DESI that started last year, um, that they have allowed high schools, um, they've sponsored high schools to take classes, AP classes in the STEM field, um, through a grant through DESI. Um, so because we didn't offer the AP Computer Science Principles, uh, we piloted last year with eight students. And luckily, this year, they had the spots and allowed us to have twenty-two students, um, enrolled in the class. And the students are doing very well.
Mrs. Wen was really persistent about this, so about getting those seats this year. So thanks to her.
Um, this is our counselor caseload. As you can see, um, the, the numbers have been pretty even the past five or six years. We added a counselor in eighteen nineteen. Um, and so you can see right now, at that time, it was two hundred and forty-eight for an average. We're right now consistently at about two hundred and thirty, um, two hundred and thirty-one this year for the average counselor caseload. So when we, when we look at building capacity, I think one thing that we have to kind of understand is how the master schedule works. Um, so when I build the master schedule, um, as Mr. Riscosi talked about earlier, we do base it on student enrollment in terms of the classes that students are choosing. So the master schedule's built on that. But there's a lot of factors that come into play. One of them are the rooms, how the rooms, um, set up into part of that puzzle. There's a lot of constraints that go into the schedule sometimes. Um, I, I just looked, this, this master schedule for this year, there were five hundred and five constraints. Um, that has to do with teachers who are co-teaching, they have to have the same prep periods. There are particular classes that need, um, particular rooms, such as biology rooms, can't be in chemistry rooms. Um, so there's a lot of different constraints that come into play. Um, so when we look at the rooms, this is a visual representation of what, um, how the rooms are structured here and what's available. As you can see in the, in the, this is the academic hallways. Uh, what you see is in red that the room is occupied. Um, our schedule runs on a seven-day cycle. So when you see the yellow slots, that's where we have some classes that meet. They're not full, um, not seven days out of seven-day cycle. It could be a study that's in there three days, um, but it's still occupied. We still can't put a class in there for the full time. In green, what you see is, um, those classrooms are free for that period. So as you can see with the, how much red we have in there, teachers, a lot of teachers are sharing rooms. Um, some of those, when a room is available, teachers can use those rooms as their prep room. Um, a lot of times it's shared space, um, when a room is free or it's in the department space, which can be kind of small for a lot of the departments.
Yeah, when you look at this chart too, think of this, there's six rooms available in the A three hundreds. That's it. The rest, the yellows use on three days a week, offset probably P your health or some other elective. In the math wing, there's only two rooms available. So we talked about the good space constraints. Um, kudos again to school counseling, Mrs. Wen, for trying to take those five hundred and five constraints and work this all in. But there's not a lot of room to wiggle. Additionally, uh, within your report, you saw the number of people that travel between classrooms, which certainly provides a level of stress for people and teachers in terms of moving between rooms and potentially different wings and floors in a short amount of time to get set up. Um, so there are, there certainly are challenges.
This is the science and engineering hallways and then the social science. Um, this year, we do have three, um, three classrooms that are outside of their department area. So, um, just the way that the, the classes are structured, um, in some periods are very full. For example, is period six, there's barely any classroom. So sometimes we do have, um, this year, we have a world language class taking, going upstairs to teach a class in the, in the social studies hallway, vice versa. We do have a science class in the child development classroom. Um, it's a physics class, so it's a little bit more flexible in terms of lab requirements.
You know, the challenge in, uh, one of the things I'd point out here is, is we certainly, you know, there's six rooms available throughout the seven-day cycle. At some point, very limited, teachers typically don't have an area to prep. Um, they're in those department suites, which can get pretty crowded depending on who's there. So it's, it's trying to find a space for them to go to the media center, to find one of these open rooms, potentially to partner with someone. But additionally, one of the challenges we're facing, we just wrapped up our program of studies meetings, which we'll be reporting on, I think, in December, January, around January timeline typically. But if you look at the bottom chart here around the computer labs in particular, we've, we've kind of dismantled numerous computer labs to fit more classrooms in. As a result of growing, growing programming such as business, computer science, uh, and the visual and performing arts. Um, Shawna Powers, who's our Director of Instructional Technology, Media and Business, uh, had a proposal to cycle students through as an elective, uh, that looks at laptop computers to give them potentially Microsoft, Microsoft, uh, office certification. Uh, when we looked at just the space, we don't have the physical capacity to offer that. So it's one of those decisions that we make behind the scenes that wouldn't get reported to necessarily here. But because we don't have space for a computer lab, that's something that we can't offer for the entire school. Uh, her vision was offered for incoming freshmen and/or sophomores. Um, it's not totally, uh, dead in the water, so to speak, but certainly, uh, it might be more limited in terms of not being able to offer everyone. So there's definitely constraints that happen as a result of the space. We'll, we'll answer any questions you may have about the report. Uh, it's pretty comprehensive, I think, for those that are watching in the audience. I think, um, Mrs. Wen helped put this together, put the majority of it together. I think it's what, forty-six or forty-seven pages? Um, so if those want to watch or home at watching and want to look at it, I'm sure it'll be posted online and you can take a look at every section of every teacher. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Effron?
Yeah, thank you so much for the report. I always find these, um, it's my sixth year, I think, looking at the block of all the red. I'm like, oh, like, and then, um, you know, spending a little more time in the building at different times when young people are moving around and seeing the teachers and seeing the teachers scrambling and then thinking there's a prep room, but the prep room somebody needs for a kid with, um, IEP and needs to take the test in the prep room. And so just like the, the scramble you're all doing is certainly very real. I know we, we wait with fingers crossed to hear back from, um, MSBA about our, um, about sort of that capacity piece. Um, if, if I can though, a question that I, that I had for you, two, two, one comment, one question. One, um, I think as we look at the capacity constraints, I just want to acknowledge there's, there's ways in which we can't expand to do like new and exciting things, which is unfortunate, right? You can't, the example about the, about computers. And as I was talking to Dr. Sawyer this morning, there's constraints on stuff that I think is part of our core principles, right? Our, we have math classrooms that are getting quite high. Like, I looked at that report and I was like, those numbers, hot, sorry, quite high in total number of students per class, right? And, and, and a lot, and more sections than I would like to see ideally, right? Uh, and so when I think about sort of what's most important, we're, we're kind of in the business of chasing the next thing to get kids excited and that's great. But we also have to do what's sort of, uh, most basic in English, math and science, right? And so seeing those math numbers is just something for me that I think we're going to, you know, potentially start to hear from parents. you know, potentially start to hear from parents about and class sizes and that, that matters, right? We know, we know it matters and it's important and so, really appreciate your keeping an eye on it and I know you're managing it and the constraints that you have, but I also know sort of from where I sit, that's not where I want it to be, right? And it's, it's the first time it had jumped out to me in a subject matter that felt like, hmm, that's, that's, that's an important one. I think my, my question, if I can, if, Virtual High School, if you could explain just a little bit more about that, it seems like a great way for us to kind of learn about what students might be interested in before we decide to maybe bring on a faculty member to teach a course, the AP Computer Science. So, we have 25 seats, but it sounds like you got a separate grant for the 22 during Computer Science. Is that, did I get that right? So, this year, it's, you've almost doubled it. Amazing. But do we ever use it as a way to sort of say, oh, there's a sufficient number of kids interested in AP Economics? Maybe that's a path we should be going down because more kids are, like, knowing constraints, but it's like, is that something, or is it just sort of a so-random based on one year someone is interested in Criminology and the next two years, no one is? So, like, what is, is there patterns in there that we try to pull out and think about pulling into our program of studies?
I would say with the 25 seats, we probably don't have enough for a full class.
Yeah.
I mean, there could be a class, it would be a small class. I try to balance it out in terms of students apply for Virtual High School and I try to balance it out between students who are interested in the APs, also the, giving students an opportunity to take the electives.
Right.
So, that it's, it's all different levels within the electives. I, I think it's not just economics. The, I've had students take European, AP European History, AP Art History. I've had students, so it, it can run the gamut of, as long as we don't offer it, at Shrewsbury High School, students can choose that. So, it can fluctuate from year to year in terms of interest. This year, with the electives, I, I get excited when students take the semester electives. I have a student who's going to be taking American Sign Language for the first time this year in the spring. So, they really do find these niches of different electives that it would be very hard for us to offer here.
Sure. Can I ask just one other, okay. How do we administer that? So, it, it shows up on a student's transcript as you're in AP Computer Science. It doesn't have a special asterisk that's like, it's part of a Shrewsbury course and then like the students do it during the day and they have to find one of these rooms that's not available?
Yes. They are, they're actually, they're scheduled to be in the media center and we do have, we do have a block of computers.
Okay.
For students to access because some classes, most of the students will use their iPads. Some students find it easier on, on the actual desk class.
Okay.
So, they are scheduled to be in the media center and it's, it varies. Some students, it can be flexible in terms of where they are because they're seniors. They can also work in other places too, if they wanted to. So, there is some flexibility in terms of space for Virtual High School because it's, it's online, but students are scheduled into very specific, into their schedule periods. The classes are titled VHS to designate that it's a Virtual High School class.
Thank you.
Great. More questions, Ms. Fritz?
I think, you know, we're talking about the space. It's alarming when you still see all that red. We know that we are hoping to have some, release there, hopefully, we'll be able to get an addition on. But I look at that space constraint and, you know, there, there's not equitable opportunities for students because we just don't have enough space for people to take courses that they really would like. And to me, that's the, the problem. Like, we're not giving all students the same ability to take something they're interested in or be exposed to. And I, that's where I'm having a problem. You know, it's a great school. We've got everything that you do and you put into there in a small space. And we were at Leicester touring. It was shocking to be in a school that wasn't crowded because we're so used to being in this horribly crowded high school. So, I, I, you know, I like what everybody's doing, but I also, I just think for me, it's these space constraints and not having equitable opportunities for students, that, that's a problem for us as a school committee.
Yeah. Ms. Fritz?
I don't envy your job and trying to schedule all of these rooms and classes, but I did want to ask, it wasn't in the presentation, but in our packet, it looks like this year you did a lot of work with, there was a, a pretty big jump down in the number of rooms that teachers are using that it went, we had, the percent of teachers in three or more rooms went down substantially, which I would imagine that probably resonates well with the staff, that they're not, you know, moving their stuff through the day, but I don't know how you did that, but good for you.
Once the schedule comes out, I work very closely with directors in terms of, they might move teachers around to be in spaces. So, they do try to have teachers scheduled at two rooms instead of three.
Yeah.
So, there was a lot of attention given to that. And, and as a result of that, like I said, we had three teachers who are teaching outside of their department area, so they're moving to a whole different place.
It's a morale issue for us too, quite frankly. I think so. We paid attention to it. I think some of it's a luck of the draw with the way the master schedule is, all the constraints come out and things seem to work a little bit better this year. But again, the directors work closely with Mrs. Wen, multiple iterations of this. She sends work out over the weekends and says, I need, on Friday, sometimes on Friday, like, I need this by Monday. So, they, they do a lot of the work behind the scenes. So, again, kudos to the leadership team for paying attention to that, trying to address the needs of our staff and some of the, the issues they've identified. But again, a little bit of a luck of the draw and a little bit of attention and focus. So, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, thanks for the presentation. It's always a reminder of the space constraints at the high school, that we're not, you know, we talk about it every year. Certainly, it impacts everything. And you mentioned Mr. Vizidlo, morale comes to mind. It's just the, the staff and students day-to-day, just maneuvering around a very crowded building. You know, we know the impact, you mentioned with teacher sharing rooms, the class offerings or some of the limitations that we have around that. You mentioned the fourth highest enrollment this year in, over the last 10 years and that we've added 202 students in the last 10 years. And from what I remember from the enrollment projections, I believe that it's pretty steady for the next 10 years in terms of where we're at today. And we always talk about the MSBA opportunity that may come our way, maybe next month, but there's a lot of ifs around that and certainly years, years out if best-case scenario were to happen on that front. So, a lot of challenges, definitely respect what you do and appreciate what you do every day to work your magic to kind of make that building manageable. So, thank you for the report and for everything that you're doing for our high school students around that. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Appreciate the work in the report, Ms. Wen's all her work to, to structure the schedule for all the reasons that were mentioned. I do want to just mention as well that, you know, when you look back at these historically, thanks to the community stepping up two different times, the override in 2014 and again in 2021 to provide more resources in terms of teaching FTE, that, that's the most important factor in class size, of course, is having enough educators to, to have those number of sections. And then, in addition to that, I just want to again call the attention that there's needs and emerging needs, evolving needs when it comes to serving our English Language Learner population, serving our special education population with best practices around co-teaching. That requires more staffing, maybe not more space in some of those cases, but more staffing and being able to use the, the dollars that we've had allocated to us wisely to maximum effect to try to provide the best educational situation possible for those students at a really critical time towards the end of their pre-K to 12 experience. So, but, you know, one thing that I can, you know, certainly this report should assure the community of is that the high school leadership team, Ms. Wen, Ms. Vizidlo, the other assistant principals, but particularly Ms. Wen and the directors, work really thoughtfully to maximize the resources we have to the, the best effect for our students and our staff. So, thank you and much appreciated.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It's the FY '26 Draft Budget Priorities Guidance and Calendar to vote on tonight. At the meeting on October 23rd, Mr. Girardi presented a draft of the budget guidelines and priorities for the fiscal year 2026, a review by the committee in advance of a vote planned for tonight's meeting. Documents were posted on the district website for public view in advance of the requested vote at tonight's meeting. Ms. Heffernan and Ms. Fritz are members of the Finance Subcommittee. Mr. Girardi and Dr. Sawyer are here to answer any questions that we might have. I don't know that we received any feedback, any email or anything in particular. Any further questions or comments?
I just, I just wanted to sort of make the community aware that Ms. Fritz and myself, along with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi participated in a, in a review. We had mentioned two weeks ago that we were looking at an, at an external support to do some longer-term modeling. It's come up a few times tonight. What are the long-term costs and what are the risks? What does that mean? What if high school enrollment grows by another X number of students or decreases? And I'm excited that we were able to move a lot of that work forward in our nearly inked-in agreement or very close to inked-in agreement so that honestly, we'll all have a few more meetings as we'll have to talk with those individuals about what's important and what are the risks and trade-offs and things so that we can really ensure, from my point of view, that not only these documents are about this budget cycle, but we have, every one we do has impacts on the next one and what are we setting ourselves up for? You know, even as I mentioned, you know, earlier tonight on, on the vocational programming, like, what does that mean longer-term for, for us or every negotiation or, you know, that we can't really look at these in one-year cycles even though we spend about nine months on a one-year cycle? And so, just excited that that work is gonna kick off and I, and to me, it's about making sure that we, we understand and then we can communicate well about what the costs are for the education that we think is, is quality one and what that means. And sort of both to keep it and to grow it in the different ways that we hear from the community that they want to see that grow. So, I'm excited that work is moving forward. It'll be kind of going on in the background here for a little while, but eventually coming back to this, this committee later on this winter. So, I think it's important to know that's moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Wensky.
Yeah. Further comments, questions? Dr. Sawyer, anything?
I did not receive any feedback and I would recommend that the school committee vote to approve.
Okay. Great. So, moving forward with the votes, so I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget priorities and guidance as presented.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay. So, we do need to go into, oh, actually, no, let me not skip over the minutes. Of course. So, the minutes of a school committee meeting held on October 23rd, 2024 were enclosed. Any revisions or edits to propose, they're being done, they will be accepted as written for approval of minutes. Okay. Now, we do need to go into executive session tonight, so therefore, I need to request a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair who declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators. Purpose two, where deliberation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. We have a motion.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifapur?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.